Good evening. I'd like to call our Pitt County Board of Education to order January 6, 2014, 6:30. We have roll call. Everybody. Thank you. We have pledge of allegiance.
Let's stand. Sleep flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, and I think we need all to think about our staff and faculty. Always keep them in mind, and our schools and our safety. And also keep in mind those who are less fortunate than we are, and they're dealing with the cold weather and the extreme cold that we're going to have for the next couple of days. So let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, due to weather conditions tonight, I'd like to see that we postpone item number 23 and item number 25 to next meeting.
Second.
Due to the weather conditions, you know.
You're talking about F and G. Is that correct?
Yes. F and G.
So you have a motion?
Say.
Billy and Benji seconded, any discussion?
Well, if we...
Uh, in discussion, Christine?
I'm sorry, can you elaborate on the weather? It was 48 degrees when I came in.
Well, it's supposed to get real cold, you know, and I know that everybody's going to have input in this, and I'm just trying to shorten the meeting.
You know, we won't be meeting again for a month.
I would have reservations about doing this. I mean, it's short, you know, it's in here, we've read it. We've read it about in the paper and all this kind of good stuff. I think we need to address the issue.
Jill? I would agree with Barbara, and I mean, it's not like we have snow or ice or anything threatening tonight. I mean, I don't...
Plus, I know it's already been discussed among some board members, and, you know, not all of us have made up our minds.
Any other discussion?
Is there any timetable that we need to meet if we do it tonight? Because I think the next time we have an opportunity for this will be February. Is there... Is there something that's going on that we should do it before February? Is there a timeline? Can anybody?
What you're saying, I guess, Robert, is, does it, would it have any negative or positive effect if we take it up at the next meeting, which would be in February, as...
opposed tonight?
Yeah. I don't think so.
Jill?
I also don't see this as being a particularly long agenda. I mean, so it seems to me we're gonna...
We'd have time discussing this.
Right.
Okay, let's vote.
A yes vote is...
What do we vote?
Yes would be to go ahead and discuss it.
No.
No.
His motion was to delay it.
His motion was to delay it. All right, no vote.
A no is for what?
A no is to say that we're not going to delay it.
You would discuss it tonight.
No means we'll discuss it tonight.
I don't know if mine is right or not, so... I mean, no, so whatever this is supposed to be.
Not present. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, there's something wrong here.
We're not right.
Let's do it by hand.
Let's do it by hand.
It's showing me not present, which is obviously incorrect. So I can't vote because it's showing me not present.
Why don't we do a hand vote?
The yeses there mean we ought to discuss it tonight?
No.
No.
The yeses...
The motion was to postpone the discussion.
And if you vote no, you're voting against his motion.
That's correct.
Well, then that mine is not right, because I'm voting against it, and it says yes up there.
Do a hand vote.
You have to do a hand vote, because I can't vote.
You want to do a hand vote? We'll do a hand vote.
Please.
All those who want to dis... All those who are in favor of Billy's motion, which is to postpone it. All right, three. All those in favor of discussing it tonight, raise your hand. So we discuss it tonight. So going back to the adjustments to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Jill moved to approve. Ms. Owens, second. Any discussion? Okay, we vote?
We can't, I can't, I can't vote.
Try one more time and see if it works.
It's got her as not present.
Not present.
It's never gonna let me vote.
Is there one next to you that you can...
Then it'll show it as Mary. And she's not present either, so that won't work.
That's just to raise our hands.
To approve.
To approve. Okay, oppose? All right, motion. Billy voted against it. Okay, we have public expression. Any public expression? None. Spotlight on teaching and learning. Brock?
Miss Cam, I'm told if you hit yes now that you would be logged in, and...
There you go.
Thank you, Brock.
Good evening, everybody. Hope y'all had a good holiday season. Got a couple of things for you this evening. First of all, as some of you may have seen, highlighted in the Daily Reflector last month, the Hope Middle School Creative Dramatics Department recently performed the school's second-ever live onstage production. They did this through the help of a $1,000 Macy's Believe grant, and the musical, or the performance was Yes, Virginia, the Musical. The musical was directed by Hope Middle School Creative Dramatics teacher Jackie Goldbowski, and Hope is the only middle school in the district that currently offers a creative dramatics program, or creative dramatics classes. And I can tell you from teaching with Ms. Goldbowski that she's done a fantastic job providing those kids there and inspiring them to participate in just another way to express their talents that they have. I'm going to quickly just show you a couple of images from that performance, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Goldbowski and Arts Education Director Jane Austin-Bien to come up and talk briefly about it. Here's your flyer. There are 172 photos here, so again, I'm going to zip through them pretty quickly and hit some of the better ones. Try to, this is obviously prior to performance. Try to get you into the performance itself here. And I can tell you, last year, they did Snow White. I was there for that, and it was really good. If this was anything, as good as that one, it was a terrific thing to watch. In fact, I think Dr. Linker, I think you went...
Very nice. Kids did a great job.
Let me zip along here. And I'm sure they can fill you in more, but I think they created all the props and everything like that themselves as well. All right, so that gives you a little idea what they had going on there. I'm going to ask Ms. Goldbowski and Arts Education Director Jane Austin-Bien to come up now and just talk briefly. And I think they've got a couple of the kids from the performance with them as well.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving us a few minutes to just showcase some of the outstanding young people in our county. As you know, when I looked at some of the images of the production, it just speaks of 21st century skills. I'm seeing children highly engaged, working as a team, working in ways they hadn't worked, experiencing things that had never been done on a Hope stage or in other schools. And so I think we need to be very mindful of the types of learning that occur when a child does study an art form. This happens to be theater. This happens in our visual arts classes. It happens in music and dance classes as well. So as with the Margaret Blunt Art Exhibit Reception, we always have students have some candid remarks or prepared remarks about how it personally affected them to be in a very creative, different kind of environment in a school setting. Before we have a few students come forward, Ms. Goldbowski is an amazing theater arts teacher. As Brock mentioned, she is our only theater arts educator in the middle schools at the present time. So we are very grateful for that position being in place. But we do recognize that, you know, she is teaching a curriculum every day, so these children are learning a tremendous amount of problem solving and coming up with their own solutions to these problems in real-life situations. And that's exactly what children need today in order to be competitive in this very high-stakes global economy. So with that said, Ms. Goldbowski?
Thank you guys so much for recognizing these students for their amazing progress in this program. And I can't say how thankful I am for the opportunity to teach them every single day. They just, they blow me away. Every single day, they blow me away with the things that they can do. And I can't stress how important it is for them to be involved in the arts, not just theater arts, but the visual arts and music and dance. And if I had had the opportunity to have been exposed to all of these things at their age, I think, you know, the world would be a better place. But I just want to give them a few minutes to talk to you. I want to introduce Justice Crutchfield first. He was a freshman last year, and he was in Snow White. He was my, what was your name, nincompoop? He was my nincompoop in Snow White, and so he had a few words for you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Justice Crutchfield, and I want to share my experience as an actor. When I first came to Hope Middle School, nothing really interested me. I didn't like any sports, and I didn't want to play any instruments. Then I heard about the Creative Dramatics Department, so I thought I might try that out. On audition day, I was sort of nervous. I didn't know anyone, plus I was afraid I wouldn't get a part, but I did. After the first couple rehearsals, I started to make some friends through it. I was glad I had something to do after school. Then came the night of the show. Everyone was nervous, especially me. But on the inside, I was sort of sad that this would be the last time I would see some of my friends. After the show, I said goodbye to everyone and went home. The next day at school, I learned we would be performing for the school. I was excited that now everyone could see what we had worked so hard to perfect. The next year at school, I heard that this time we'd be doing a musical. At auditions, I was more nervous because I didn't know what they would think of my singing, and I couldn't make up my mind for a part. When the results came out, I was surprised I had got one of the male leading roles. This year, we worked even harder because it took up more time on the show night, and there was more people, and the show was even better than last year's. The drama department has helped me become less nervous when speaking in front of large crowds, build my self-esteem, and taught me everyone, everyone has a role and is important no matter how small. Ever since that first day, acting has become a big part of my life, and I look forward to doing more productions in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is Connor Montane. He was my Scraggly Santa in Yes, Virginia.
At the very beginning, it was very difficult because I didn't really know anyone, and, um, it was very, it was hard. When I tried out to get the play, I didn't know if I was going to make it or not. So when I heard that I got it, I was really surprised, and I didn't know, like I said, I didn't know a lot of people, so I had to meet some. And I met a lot of a bunch of good friends, and they were really nice people, and Ms. Goldbowski. And at that day of the play, I was really surprised about how many people were there. And, um, and it was really hard because I didn't know if I was going to get all, I didn't know if I was going to get everything right. But actually, I was really fun because I did get some right, and I got to be onstage with all my friends, and it was really fun.
A good deal.
Thank you.
I have one last student for you. Her name is Abigail Perrini. She is an eighth grader at Hope Middle School. And this is her second play with us, with the Creative Dramatics Department. Last year, she was...
I was a tree and a gruesome twosome, which was an apprentice to a witch.
And then this year, she was one of my stage managers. So she's been onstage and she's been behind the scenes. She kind of knows the whole thing now. I'll let her speak to you.
Last year, it was my first year at Hope, and I loved to do theater and dance and sing. And I thought it was a great idea to get up on stage and be who I wanted to be because the stage gave me creativity and gave me... It let me be myself when I was on the stage, and I'm happy for that. And it was a great show. This year, as a stage manager, I got to see everything. I got to connect with everybody, and I got to help them out and do all the beautiful sets. And I think this play was really great, and if you missed it, it would have been too bad because, because it was absolutely wonderful with all the cast, and everyone was great. And hopefully, next year, we'll have another great, wonderful play. And I'm just enjoyed to be by Ms. Goldbowski and everyone who was in the play. And thanks to all the drama.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question? Ms. Goldbowski, if I heard right about this play, and I wasn't able to attend, and obviously, I did miss out, so I apologize for that. But with this grant, were there some age restrictions in the children you could, the students you could pick? Could you explain that one second?
Whenever I got the email about the grant, and actually, Julie Howard at North Pitt, a fellow theater teacher, sent me the information. She was like, you need grant, you need some money. This program's new, let's build you up. And so she sent me the information about it, and it was an elementary and middle school play grant. And so the restrictions were that ages 12 and under could be the actors. And so I called on Abigail and my former actress, who were a little bit older, and I said, I need your help. I need stage managers. I need lighting people. I need set people. They didn't say over 12 couldn't help me on that, so I got them involved as well.
All right, that was a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And we would like to present you something, and I'd like for us to step in soon. And the students to also... The County Board of Education proudly recognizes Jack Goldbowski for creating excellence in the East, then on January 6, 2014. And I would also like to say Jane Bienen and I have had several discussions, and she and I have worked together for many years. We always know that you can integrate the arts in any subject. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Jill?
I'm curious to know, is this an encore class at Hope, and all you do is teach drama, or... So you've got kids coming to you all day long wanting this program?
That's good.
I think it's grown from a half-day, if I'm not mistaken, to now a full day of classes because of all the interest of everyone. Yeah, so...
All right.
Tells us something.
All right, one other item for you this evening. On Thursday, December 12th, South Greenville Elementary School held its second annual Tech Fest. They had about 275 people attend to see how the students there have been using technology to enhance their learning. As some of you may know, South Greenville, from grades three through five, is our only one-to-one elementary school in terms of technology that students have. Some of the projects featured were digital stories, presentations about science investigations, websites created by the students, and holidays around the world projects. This time, I'm going to ask South Greenville Principal Shonda Cherry and the school's curriculum technology facilitator Melissa Tetter to come up with some of the talented young people they brought as well and discuss the event a little more with you.
Okay, I'm Melissa Tetter, the tech facilitator at South Greenville. And I've actually made a video to kind of tell you what Tech Fest is all about. So instead of me speaking, like I like to do, I'm going to let the video speak for itself. Well, Tech Fest at South Greenville is a chance for students to showcase the work that they've been creating every day using technology. It's a time for family, community, and school to come see their work. At our Tech Fest, we even have parents sign in using technology. Each grade level has to create a project, and every student is involved in some way. Our kindergarten students all worked together to make pages in an ebook all about themselves. They made circle maps to show all about me. In first grade, students narrated their personal narratives using VoiceThred and iMovie. And in second grade, they talked about the holidays around the world using Grogster, educations, and Haiku deck. Our third grade and fourth grade students created websites using Weebly as another way to show the information they researched. Third grade students made their websites about planets, and fourth graders made their websites about famous North Carolinians. In the fifth grade, students did science investigations and then made a report using Keynote and included video from their experiment. We even had a parent explore room where parents could come check out the technology for themselves.
And I have two groups of students here. I have one of my fourth grade groups, and I have one of my third grade groups to come show you their websites that they created on their own after doing the research. A part of their projects, they had to include a QR code. So I made some cards with a QR code of our website where you can see all of our projects are included, all of the kindergarten projects, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Anything that could have been sent or shown is on the website, so anybody can go see it anytime. So as they are going to talk to you about today, the whole world can see what they've created. So Brock will make sure you guys get these. You can scan them with your QR reader and pull up the website. So I'm going to let my fourth graders come on over.
I am Molly Reynolds, and this is Justice's fourth grade class.
Hi, I'm Amara Tyson. I'm Ms. Justice's fourth grade class.
We created a website using Weebly on a famous North Carolinian named Soupy Sales. First, we chose a person to research. Then we made thinking maps to organize our research. And we used Wikipedia and Biography.com to help us. Our research, we used iPads and the computer. Our teacher gave us a rubric so we would know what was expected.
On this website, you'll find information about Soupy Sales. On our website, we use different pages to put different information, like his birth and his accomplishments. We worked together as a group in a computer lab and in a classroom to finish our website.
We added pictures, maps, and a blog on our website. On our blog, we made a post asking for people to comment, suggest, and question us about our website.
While we were doing our project, we also learned how to add links, make slide shows, and publish our website so everybody could see it. Thank you.
This is my group of third graders.
Hi, I am Emmy Ingles, and Amos Bell was in our group too, but he is not here tonight.
Hey, I am Zavani Prior.
And I am Katie Merrick, and we are in Ms. Keo's third grade class.
We chose the planet Uranus. We got all of our information on Worldbook Online and other websites on the internet. We used our iPads and computers. We made a tree map to put our research in categories, and one of the categories was weather. We also made a circle map with our facts in it. And then this is Amos's part, but he's not here. We made a website using Weebly, working in our groups in the computer lab. First, we chose a background. Then we added pages for different information. We put our information from our circle map into the right pages.
I am Zavani Prior. We added more information and, like, pictures, facts about how cold Uranus is and how many days it takes, and how many days it takes to go all the way around the sun. We found a solar system map on YouTube, and we added it to our homepage.
On our resource page, we put links on there so people can go to the website and look at the information to learn more about Uranus like we did. We edited our website and checked our links. Then we published it for the world to see. When we were doing the website, we found out that Uranus has only been flown by one time.
So that's some of the Tech Fest projects in a nutshell. Like I said, you can check out the website, see any of the other students' work. They did have to use a thinking map somewhere in there, and you can see they did a lot of work with their thinking maps with their research. But what we really wanted to show with Tech Fest is what they can create and produce. So when you get a chance, check it out. They're doing this stuff all day long, and they were so excited to come share what they had done, so... We just wanted to take the time to thank the board for allowing South Greenville the opportunity to have the technology at our school. We've seen it do great things for our students, not only the students in the building, but also the adults. The students are the digital natives, so they're kind of used to doing these things. But the adults in the building, parents and teachers alike, have grown by leaps and bounds and know how to do a lot of the technological pieces that, just to keep up with the kids, and we appreciate the opportunity.
We appreciate those presentations and those students that were involved very much. Motion to approve consent items?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Wichita moved, and Ms. Little... Mr. Richard moved, and Ms. Little, second, let's vote. Hopefully, Ms. Keo's will work.
You're here.
I'm sorry, I'm asleep.
All right, new business. Human Resources Committee Report. Dela.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. The Human Resources Committee met on December 2nd prior to the board meeting, and we went over a couple of things that we have been discussing over several months. But one thing that we focused on more so was our teacher turnover report, as was indicated and expressed in the media, and the state report came out not too long after our December 2nd meeting, where we had an increase in our teacher turnover rate from 8.6% to 18.05%. So we've been discussing in our committee some various ways to come up with ideas, to work with our beginning teachers. That was something we expressed, what the county commissioners expressed, and we've been talking about as well. And we're going to be bringing some ideas to the Human Resources Committee at the January 28th meeting, which we would love for everybody to be there at that point in time. But we have, we will have a detailed breakdown of what that means for our district to show you exactly where we are compared to the other 115 districts, the other 114 districts in our, in our state. We're also continuing to discuss the Affordable Care Act, and we will be receiving more information after the webinar that is occurring next weekend, next week, between the webinar that will have the Finance and the Human Resources Committees together, and then we'll be bringing more information. But we will have to have a policy that's adjusted regarding that as well. And then lastly, we talked about the teacher contracts at 25%, the Appropriations Act of 2013, and how we're developing a frequently asked questions list that has been forwarded to Mr. Letchworth to put on our website, because one of the committee's concerns, which we talked about as well, is getting information out to the public, because this process is moving at this point in time. We know that there are major concerns, but our goal is that we get as much information out there as possible to all our teachers and the public as well, so they will completely understand. It is a massive task. It is a massive bill that has a lot of ins and outs that we're trying to decipher for the betterment of making sound decisions at our, at our level, but also giving information for our teachers to make decisions as well. So we are working on a rubric that will be presented to you as the board. The state is working on a model contract, and we, of course, will have to revise our policy, because at this point in time, there is no more statement of career status for the upcoming years and beyond at this moment. So our goal is to communicate as much as possible our information. And on a good note, we do have our National Board Certification Ceremony, which is January 29th at 4:30 at South Central. We hope everyone received their invitations in the mail, so that we'll be at 4:30, and look forward to seeing you there if possible. And that was our report. And next on the agenda is the approval and first, well, first reading of the calendar. We did follow all protocols as far as letting everyone have input. It was given to, it was on the web, and we had it open for a series of weeks to receive input. A lot of the input, of course, was focused on early release days, going back to school after Labor Day, putting it in conjunction with the ECU and the PCC calendar. So there are a lot of different things that are brought about, and of course, we look at all of them, but some of those things, as far as starting after Labor Day, is out of our control, because we have a timeframe and window that is designated by state law. And one thing about the early release days, we have suggestions to have them on Fridays. So I feel the need to explain it a little bit clearer. Our early release days were designed so we could have parent conferences, and I think there's some interpretation that they're meant just for folks to get out and have a little bit of early vacation. But our purpose is to have them around the time of reporting for our six weeks and reporting for our nine weeks, so people have an opportunity, if they see a grade or some concerns, they can sit down and talk to the parent about it. So that is the reason why we have the early release days, and that did come about from a request from parents several years ago to talk about how can we talk further with our teachers. And so, of course, that will be much more needed now that parents have more access through Parent Portal. And those were the things that we had from there. So you have the proposed calendar. We have 180 days there. Because we're using 180 days, then we have to have five mandated staff development days. They're indicated on the calendar. And also, too, we have the suggestions of early release days that you'll see on the page after the calendar, and also proposals about teacher assistance based on the policy that was approved several years ago of days where they did not work. So this is just the first reading. So we'll ask for suggestions, and of course, we'll look at those and bring it back for second reading in February.
Any questions for Dela, Ms. Owens?
I have a question about March 2015. You have a day on March the 30th that the children are out, and then you have three days, and then you're out, of course, for Good Friday, which of course is, I like. But I just wondered about that. Could that, I'm not suggesting anything, just a question mark here, could that day have been put somewhere else so you don't have such a short week there? Because then you're out for that next whole week.
And I think one of the reasons why it was put there, in looking at the way the 45 days for the nine weeks calendar, I think that was the choice, why the committee made that choice, and I understand completely about giving that suggestion, because the nine weeks ends on the 27th. So we try to give them as much time as possible to get a good 45 days in, because our first semester is so chopped up with, with the holidays. And so that was the reason why the committee suggested that. But I do understand that concern.
Mr. Richard.
I know that a couple of things. One, going, speaking directly to the calendar bill, I've had several parents contact me, some within my family, some within just about all the attendance areas, contact me about why in the world are kids taking exams after Christmas with all of this time over the holidays? You know, my statement to them is they need to contact their legislatures. You know, those are the individuals that are putting the constraints on public schools in terms of what they think is best in terms of the Save Our Summers bill, but it does not make sense for students in high school to take exams after Christmas break. And I think we would see a significant educational impact, which we'd hope that's what the legislature's interested in, but the educational impact should be paramount in their decision-making. And I would ask if there are any legislatures that are here or listening this evening, that they certainly pay close attention and hear from their constituents, because I've been directing everyone that's contacted me to speak to the legislators, giving them the telephone numbers, to please share this information with them, because it was much more sensible for kids to take their exams prior to Christmas break. The second issue is in terms of teacher turnover. That, again, is a problematic issue in terms of teacher pay. I know of one particular teacher recently that has left North Carolina to go to South Carolina, and this was unheard of several years ago, but this teacher received over $10,000 in a raise going to work for a rural school system in South Carolina. And, and that is problematic, when we've got teachers that are leaving, particularly hardest hit. If you run a ring around the border counties of Virginia, Tennessee, Georgia, and South Carolina, those teachers are literally stepping across the line and receiving tremendous salary increases compared to what North Carolina's doing. So I don't think people should look at this report and say Pitt County has a teacher retention problem. I mean, I think there's, there's probably some pockets that we can improve some things on, but I think to say that we, we have a retention problem, or districts in North Carolina are not doing things to retain teachers, we don't control the salaries. We don't control many of the working condition situations in terms of instructional supplies, staff development funds, basically which are non-existent at this point to help improve teachers' working conditions. So that needs to be something that, when people contact their local board members, they need to understand, we only have local dollars, which are the smallest part of the pot. The state is what controls those issues in terms of the pay and the working conditions by and large for teachers.
And that is something that our committee has been discussing, especially from the incentive part of it, because we recognize that we, sometimes we're competing with the person that's just 25 miles down the road in another county, and we recognize that we have to do, change the way we do business. As the superintendent mentioned, as someone, we need saying out the box, we're at the point where we need to get rid of the box. And I, I agree with that, because we're going to have to change the way that we deal with the situations that we're dealt with, because the economy has changed and times have changed. And that's one of the things that we're going to be talking about our next meeting. So definitely. And, and of course, a couple of concerns did come up about the exams. I think I only had two feedback emails about that online, about exams being before the Christmas break.
But I, I've had a couple of calls regarding the exams, and that does not make any instructional sense whatsoever, and I refer them to the legislature. When you see the constraints that we have been put in, it's not Pitt County's fault that we have to come up with this calendar. It is the legislature that's dictating us to have to conform to their procedures.
Yes, they've designated a day, we have a certain day that we have to start, and a certain day that we have to end.
And I think it would be very important if the principals would be able to at least get that out to some of the parents, so that they would understand that the principal nor Pitt County had anything to do with the way that we have developed, the way these exams have been given.
And we did this year to, to bring more light to the calendar situation. When we're looking at this calendar, we did bring it before our principals, so they would have more information and tools to talk to parents about when questions like that come up, because we do recognize that the public sometimes doesn't understand what we see as educators and community members that work with education, such as yourselves. So we definitely feel the need to get more positive information out there and understand what is there is not necessarily just something that we've created.
What the board and Pitt County's hands were tied in development of this calendar. I mean, we may be able to move a day here and there, like Ms. Owens was talking about, but the constraints of the exam and so forth, we can't do anything about it.
So we will take Ms. Owens' information back and review it at the senior level, and then it'll be ready for second reading at the next meeting.
Sean.
Just real quick, Dr. Jackson. First of all, I'd like to compliment the entire Calendar Committee, and the public should know of what a arduous task this is with a lot of constraints to develop a, a school year calendar. This is no small task with a lot of little rules and, and whatnot, and I think y'all have done a fine job. In two particular areas that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, based on my recent Christmas break, to be able to have January 2nd off, I know of several school systems that were in session last Thursday and Friday. And they were very envious. I know when we went to visit them, that my children were home, and I, and I believe I heard from several teachers that appreciate that as, as well, and I think that works out very well outside of the exam issue. And secondly, Good Friday. So thank you. Great job.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, EPS Committee Report. Mark.
Ms. Olmstead, if you would.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did everybody have a good holiday break? So did we. At the last EPS Board Committee meeting, it was held at Faucland Elementary School, because we wanted to be there and present for the dedication of the Renovated Media Center. So most of you were there. There were eight of you there. Geo Camets, Mildred Council, Benji Forrest, Robert Moore, Barbara Owens, Christine Waters, Mark Richard, and Mary Williams. And there were two main purposes for the meeting, two main discussion points, and they were to address the two big initiatives coming down from the State Department, which is SchoolNet, which is the assessment portions of HomeBase, and then also the Read to Achieve Initiative, which is the law that requires all third graders to read proficiency. Lisa did a great job that night of presenting everything in really good detail, so I've asked her to come back tonight. She does such a great job. And so I'm going to let her kind of go through it a little bit with you.
Thank you for that honor, Ms. Olmstead. Good evening. Pretty much just to discuss with the HomeBase, with SchoolNet, it's a, with all technology, it's a new endeavor for us here in North Carolina, where we're able to create benchmarks. And you can think of SchoolNet as a component of HomeBase, and there are pieces in it that where you can use assessments, whether it's state level, district level, and school level. So we've spent some time training our teachers, and they're able to use this in their classrooms as assessments as well. We did begin a district benchmark. There were some technical difficulties on the, the SchoolNet side, Pearson, because we have such a large county, but we're working through those as we go throughout the year. It's important to know that this is a resource that's been, we've been utilized for our teachers for doing assessments, especially in the classroom, to help drive instruction. As well as talking about the portal, which I think Brock is going to talk about a little bit later on, that was a piece that was very positive that we discussed that night, which is that parents, as well as students, can look at their grades through the parent and student portal, which is to be noted, actually, the parent and student portal is the same portal, so that when students go on, it's the same grade book that they will get, that their parents will see, and also that progress reports that are sent home are actually that, were same reports, that's what's printed for them. You can look at their attendance and all those types of things. So it's, it's a really good technology piece, which I know Brock's going to talk more about. The other piece that we talked about was the legislation, as Ms. Olmstead said, with Read to Achieve. Mainly, we talked about the portfolio process. There's three components of the Read to Achieve. First, there's the Reading 3D, which we are already doing in Pitt County and have been quite successful with that over the past couple of years. PEPs, which is the Personal Education Plan for students that are maybe at risk. And the final component is this portfolio. And what the portfolio is, is DPI developed it. It has 36 passages based on 12 standards with the new Common Core standards. And students are asked in third grade to take three passages a week. They have to master four out of five of those in order to be able to move to the next standard. And like I said before, there's 36 of those. We begin this in January. In fact, we'll be beginning, we'll start this process next week. We are rolling it out with our principals and our teachers. We've done a lot of, spent a lot of time going through it with everyone to make sure that it's been communicated to parents. There's a brochure located on our website, so that they can go on and be informed of this as well, and the same for our teachers and our staff. As far as the portfolio goes, one of the pieces, the components that go, that went along with the portfolio, if students aren't able to finish the portfolio or complete it, they are required to go to summer camp, which is six to eight weeks. That is, parents do have the option of whether their student or their child goes to summer camp, but we, as a district, just like others in North Carolina, are required to have that summer camp, and that's a process that we are just beginning at this time.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Matt, Pitt County Schools Bandwidth Update.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? All right, we're going to talk a little bit about bandwidth and what it's going to do for us for our online testing coming up. Basically, the bandwidth is the amount of space or available area we have to transmit data across the internet, worldwide web. What we've done here over the last two weeks, we've expanded our bandwidth from 1,000 megabytes to 2,000. 1,000 megabytes is one gigabyte. So if I go back and forth on them, sorry about that, that's why it is. But we're going to talk about the digital highway that we have now. Currently, inside of Pitt County Schools, from our schools to our data center, we have 10,000 megabytes, okay? On a daily average, we use about 3,500 megabytes. So internally, we are doing very good, okay? We only use about 35% of what our capacity is. From our data center out to the internet, that's where we have upgraded from 1,000 megabytes to 2,000. It was completed on the 30th. Our filters are now in. We are currently running our tests on them, getting our bugs out of the system and everything like that to get ready for our online testing that comes up next week. From Pitt County, from Pitt County Schools to the North Carolina Testing, which is at NC State University, there's 2,400 megabytes. Keep in mind, that highway of 2,400 megabytes is also shared with ECU, Pitt Community College, and any other entity that has to test based on anything statewide. All this will come together in a minute. This is just an example of a route that it takes. When you click on a website, this one is to the North Carolina Testing Center in NC State, this is the route that our data goes to to get to Raleigh. It actually goes up to Mount Airy, back down to Rutherfordton, back over to Raleigh. It's not just a straight path. In this path, there are seven actual modems, if you will, data ports that it has to go through to get to this spot. If one of these is clogged up, it gets rerouted. So, it could go from seven to ten to twenty, just depending on the number of people that are actually trying to get it online at the same time. Power schools, you've all heard power school problems. As we go, this is the path out to Chesterfield. It actually goes through thirteen to get there. And that's on a typical day. This is a website that, that we can pull up anytime and actually look up any website and it can show you how it gets across the country or wherever that is to get your data out. We took this information that we have gathered, has all come from the State Board of Education, from their presentation on November nineteenth of two thousand and twelve. This is what we need to know for our online testing coming up. So, all of the information, the next couple of slides you're gonna see, was presented by the State Board of Education. We have actually highlighted a couple of things that, that are of most interest to kinda speed this up. Basically, they're gonna increase to ten gigs or ten thousand megabytes for online testing for the state. This slide is an example of logging on and actually taking the online testing for the state of North Carolina. The first spike you see with the, with the red and green line is the actual initial startup and sign-in onto the North Carolina state testing. So, it's the browser request, it's the administrator's login, and then it's logging in that student to take the test. That is the bottleneck that we're gonna have to go with online testing, okay? It is the actual initial startup, the initial login to get there. Once the test is running, as you can see as it drops back down on the red line that runs flatline across the bottom of the screen, that's what it takes to actually run the test with the people on it. Our bottleneck is gonna be signing on. According to them, every five-minute window, forty-seven thousand students can log on every five minutes, okay? So, in five minutes, only forty-seven thousand can log on at a time. This is all gonna come together in a minute. NC State by themselves, these are, these are two slides from NC State, their data usage just from the college itself. November, they were using about two, two thousand megabytes on average. December of thirteen, they were using four, four thousand megabytes. They've upgraded to a ten thousand megabyte system, but the college itself is using four thousand of that or four gig of the ten that they've added. So, that's already knocked the state down to approximately sixty percent of what they've increased their, their system to for the, for the state online testing. What does this mean for us? Inside Pitt County schools, we can simultaneously, simultaneously sign on forty, ninety-four hundred students simultaneously to take the test. We have approximately eighteen thousand, so we can do half of them simultaneously starting up to take the test. NC State can handle a maximum of forty-seven thousand every five minutes. That's all they can handle. If NC State is running at four thousand meg or four gig, that takes us down to only sixty percent. They can only handle twenty-eight thousand students logging on at one time, okay? Our testing that comes up next week, four hundred and twenty thousand students have to sign on and take, start taking tests. In May, one point one million students in North Carolina have to sign on to take the test. So, what does this mean? We are anticipating problems with online testing this year. That is to say the least. Our bottleneck is gonna be at that beginning point. Once everybody's online and running, it's gonna be fine. Internal to Pitt County, we can handle the testing. It's once we leave Pitt County schools to go to the actual test center to retrieve the data from there and make that test happen is where we are gonna have our problems. I got Jeff here to answer any kinda technical questions we have about that. He's been educating me for the last two weeks on this to, to kinda get me up to speed. But, the main purpose tonight was to come up here and say, hey, we have doubled our bandwidth leaving Pitt County schools for us, which is great. It's gonna help us. However, it's not gonna solve the problem for our online testing. With the numbers that, that have been provided to us by the state, we still see that we are anticipating problems with online testing. Now, with Jeff and Tim McCreasy and David Thompson and Michelle Owens, we're trying to get prepared for all this. We've got paper tests getting ready. We've got them stored. So, when we do have these problems, we've got backup plans. But, just wanted to get that out to you guys, to let you know that, hey, we are gonna have some issues with come online testing.
So, what I understand is that since you've doubled that bandwidth, we would be able to handle what we have within Pitt County. It's once we start dealing with the state.
Yes, sir.
That's where the problem's gonna come.
Yes, sir. According to the information they've provided us, we have gotten emails back from them saying that this, this data is accurate and is up to date is, is what their plan is right now.
Mr. Moore?
You, you have here ninety-four hundred test starts. That's what you can handle. What's the definition of a test start? In other words, if I'm ninety-four hundred and one, does that mean?
That's, that's simultaneous.
Extra minutes to, to log on?
That'll be, that'll be simultaneous. So, we can handle ninety-four hundred students going on right now. And then, once they're on, or once one is in, another one can join. But it can continue to roll. So, simultaneously ninety-four hundred, once those are in, we can handle another ninety-four hundred simultaneously.
Any other, oh, do you?
So, we have everything that we need.
Yes.
So, this is a state problem and it's a statewide problem. So, every other school system or most other school systems are, we're sitting where we're sitting. Or, or do we even know that? I guess it doesn't matter.
We don't, I don't know that for sure. Based on the numbers that we have been provided, it looks to be, it's gonna be a statewide problem.
But there's nothing we can, absolutely nothing Pitt County schools can do about it. We've done everything that we can do.
I think the message earlier was talk to our legislators.
That's right.
And when is the testing, January?
Next week, right? Starts next week. Next week is high school. So, high school across the state would be approximately four hundred and twenty thousand students.
Quickly, we had some concerns over the last several months over the speed within what things were happening at the schools. Because these guys were able to go out and double the internal bandwidth, most of those problems should now be taken care of. So, inside, we're, I mean, you can see the numbers and, you know, we put all these there to confuse you, obviously. It worked good for us. What you see is, we can handle what's going on inside, okay? But when you've got, you know, four hundred and twenty thousand high school kids across the state who all test about the same week because we all start at the same time dictated by the General Assembly, then it will get, will be some issues. And that's why we, you know, you didn't see this as much in the previous years because we were only testing the O C classes and not even all of them. You know, our goal this year was to test everything, including the MSLs or the common exams. And that's, you know, the common exams have, I don't know, probably added ten times more, more, increased number of tests, so. What we'll be able to look at here is some paper tests. And we do know, I think it was English we're gonna keep. And, but, with that regard, we are taking precautions, so we'll be ready.
And are we doing any sort of dry run testing three through eight, or are we just gonna do high schools next week?
We did actually a dry run with high schools on the twentieth. It, it ran fairly well. There were a few issues here and there, but overall, it, it, it ran pretty well. So, that was a, just, just high school test run, but it was only internal to Pitt County. So, we've got, what, seven thousand high schoolers, give or take. So, that went, that went pretty well.
But, but there's no, there's no three through eight, grade three through eight testing until we get to May. So, right now, we're just hoping to get through the high school.
Yeah, we'll know a lot more next week.
What was your biggest issue with that dry run?
We had some, we had some connectivity issues, which were, were pretty minor. We had a couple of areas where we think the, the pathway got rerouted to a difference, which slowed it down. And then we had some operator error, which, you know, you will have. So, every, from, from runs we've had prior, this run was a lot more successful.
Okay. Sounds good.
One, one question, and that is, it seems like.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Seems like test starts is the problem. Is there any way that we can adjust our timing on this end? To help get in there early, or that's not? I guess, what, what, what are we talking about? Eight-thirty, nine o'clock, and everybody, the whole?
They actually, on that presentation, had a slide that recommended spreading out your test starts as well, as much as you could. But you gotta remember, everybody in the state's gonna be doing the same thing.
It'd be hard to coordinate one point one million students to start at different times.
At different times.
We can do it internally, but.
Internally is easy.
Again, what we are doing is, within our county, we've done all we can to run smooth. That's what's important to us. And we're gonna see that we have a state problem.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to add, this congestion that's happening at NC State, just for testing, that happens at other websites too. You know, when a lot of people decide to go to weebly.com or whatever, it's a constant flow. It's just like going down the highway and everybody's decided to get off the exit of Disney World. It gets jammed up. So, even though we've doubled our bandwidth to the internet, there's still gonna be bottlenecks in places that, once it leaves our data center, we just don't have any control over it.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Forrest?
Is this gonna be an ongoing problem every year, or is this one of those deals where this is a one-time thing and they will have it fixed on up the road?
We've put questions out, but we have no answers back. So, we're, right now, we're at the mercy of the state.
We could count on this for, for January, and we could count on even worse in May.
Yeah, 'cause there'll be more people on it every year.
Well, and I think our people should be recognized for doing a good job.
Yeah, we appreciate what you're doing. Right, we appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks. Okay, we have Christine, policy.
All right, this is the second reading of the tobacco-free school policy. And the only change is that instead of implying that electronic cigarettes are not acceptable, it is written in bold.
Move to approve second, policy two point zero zero six.
Okay, Jill made a motion and Ms. Owens seconded it. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, motion carried. Okay, we've got Brock, Parent Portal Update.
Hello again. I'll try to be brief. Some of you, as mentioned before, were at the EPS meeting where Parent Portal was discussed. For those of you who were not, just briefly, it's a, a portal offered by the state that gives parents and students real-time access to attendance, grades, assignments, those types of things. We, it's offered by the state. We could've opened it up at the beginning of the school year. We chose to wait, give everyone time to adjust to the new power school, the teachers and administrators and everyone. And we opened it up officially December ninth. And we weren't alone in that. Every other school system had some kinda delay for the most part. So far, as I said, we opened it up December ninth. The participation is not really been exactly what we might've expected at first. But one thing we do know is that prior to officially opening it, parents had access through their students' IDs. So, I think many of them were going on through their student ID, IDs and, and logging in as a student essentially and checking their students' information. So, many of those probably are continuing to do that based on what we've seen and the numbers who have actually signed up for the portal itself. I think they will tend to, they will increase as word of mouth, you know, gets out there and people start realizing the value of this and how nice it is to be able to just log on and see, you know, what's your son doing in science class? When's his next big math test and that type of stuff and not wait for them to bring that home to you necessarily, 'cause that doesn't always happen. So, just so you're clear, I gave you a folder that gives you what's on our website, how you, the instructions for logging in. If you go to our website, and obviously you can click these links and they're hot links, and you can watch the video that talks a little bit about the Parent Portal. But I've given you the, the page for it, where you can see those links. And I've also given you some of the documents so you're familiar with what parents are having to fill out for that. Essentially, the parents have a single login and then they can go in and after filling out the forms, turning them into the schools, the schools verifying their identities and getting their student login information back to them. The parents can then link every one of their students. If you've got a student at South Greenville and a student at J H Rose, then you can link those together. We're through your one single login. You can view all of it. You don't have to log in separately for each student and so forth. It's actually very easy and the process of actually signing up online is very quick and easy. Though, the one little hiccup is we do have to verify that the people who are getting the student information for logging in are indeed the people who should be getting that student information. And that's pretty important. So, I think most of the schools are taking the approach, same approach they take in enrolling students. But as I said, the instructions are there. You can see there's a frequently asked questions portion of that as well. One thing I would like to say is that the parents can create, they have to create an account originally from a web browser. Now, you could do that on a, you know, a laptop or a desktop or, or even with a smartphone, you have a web browser. You can go on and access the web and create an account through that. Then, once you've created an account through the web browser, you can download the app for your smartphone. And that gives you quicker, easier access through the app to view your standing, you know, your standing in line at the grocery store and you can check your students' info or whatever it may be. And I think, lastly, in terms of making that easier for parents who maybe have limited access to computers or maybe don't have a computer at home, but they do have a smartphone. I think some schools, while I said, as I mentioned, you, you can do it with a web browser on the smartphone. But I think some schools have started utilizing some of their PTA meetings or they have plans to set up a booth at a PTA meeting. I think at Tech Fest for South Greenville, which you heard about earlier tonight, they had a booth set up where parents could register there onsite and get any questions they had about the portal answered at, at that time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can, and we can move along.
I think it's a good program. We thank you.
One, one more thing about it. It's, we've opened it up for elementary through high school. It's really most beneficial, obviously, for grades three through twelve, 'cause K two, your Ss and U's, and you're not having real-time grades in there, so.
All right, thank you. Now, we come to a discussion regarding the resolutions that we have before us. If you look over on page twenty-four, we have a resolution before the Pitt County Board of Education regarding changes to the teacher employment law. And the first point includes that legislation that requires school boards to offer four-year contracts and bonuses to twenty-five percent of its teachers that have been employed by the school boards for at least three consecutive years. That twenty-five percent contract. And then, school districts are finding it that it's difficult to select a method of determining who qualifies for that four-year compensation. And teachers have received only a one point one-two percent salary, state salary increase in the last five years. They haven't gotten a large salary increase. And the Appropriations Act of two thousand and thirteen cut funding for classroom teachers, the teacher assistants and textbooks. It cut funding for instructional materials and limited English proficiency while continuing to eliminate funding for mental pay and professional development. So, Pitt County School Board of Education is required, we, if we vote for it, request that the General Assembly allow it to retain its pro-rated share of the ten million dollars allocated for the twenty-five percent contract to be used for alternative pay. Or compensation. For additional duties such as mentoring, leadership roles. And also, the Pitt County Board of Education is urging the North Carolina General Assembly to repeal that twenty-five percent contract and develop a more effective long-term compensation plan for teachers tied to career paths with input from education and the business community. We would want to have input from educators in any increase of, of paying teachers. That's what we're saying with this resolution. Any discussion?
I would, I would just like to say of the board, and I'll try to be brief. I know this is something that we, we need to move on with. But I, I would like to read this so that the general public that's, that's listening to this meeting or the general public that's here tonight could actually hear what this bill is about. Because when people. could actually hear what this bill is about, because when people hear an act to end teacher tenure, the one thing I, I repeatedly hear from people that are not in the know is, well, that just, that just helps you get rid of teachers that are not doing their jobs. Any administrator that's doing their job and knows how to do their job and follow the legal statute, I've done it. You can get rid of a teacher that's not performing if you have your proper documentation. It's no harder to do than it is with a beginning teacher. Keep your documentation, do your job, and you will have no issue with that. Period. And so when people look at this and say, well, this is just a great, as I said before, a great way to help us get rid of the dead weight, you can get rid of the dead weight. It's not an issue. But most of the dead weight, at least in my experience, is gone, because they can no longer afford to stay in the profession. But if this board would indulge me, Mr. Forbes, so I can read this act so that the general public will understand, and I think it'll take maybe a minute, minute and a half if I can be quick. But this says, whereas the Appropriations Act of 2013 includes legislation that requires school boards to offer four-year contracts and bonuses to 25% of its teachers that have been employed by the school boards for at least three consecutive years. That's only 25% of what the state says is roughly 90% of teachers that are currently proficient. So how is it that you actually decide this population of teachers? And I won't editorialize anymore. But whereas school districts are finding it difficult to select a method of determining who qualifies for the four-year contract offer, and whereas school boards value their teachers and believe them to be deserving of adequate and equitable compensation, and whereas teachers have received only a 1.12% state salary increase, once out of the past five years resulting in a greater need by school districts to increase recruitment and retention of teachers, and whereas the Appropriations Act of 2013 cut funding for classroom teachers, teacher assistants, textbooks, instructional materials, and LEP, while continuing the elimination of funding for mental pay and professional development. Now therefore be it resolved, that Pitt County School Board of Education requests that the General Assembly allow it to retain its prorated share of the $10 million allocated for the 25% contract to be used for alternative pay or compensation. Now therefore be it resolved, further, that the Pitt County Board of Education urges the North Carolina General Assembly to repeal the 25% contract and develop a more effective, long-term compensation plan for teachers tied to career paths with input from the education and business community. I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Second.
Mr. Wichita made a motion, and Jill, uh, seconded it. Any discussion? Ms. Christine.
Uh, did this proposal not come from the School Board Association? Was, no.
This was written out. Out of, uh, camp, it was another camp.
New handover.
New handover, okay. Just to, real quick, we need to spell employment right before we send this in.
Yeah.
Which section is that in?
The headline.
Headline.
The headline.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, uh. Be, I, I think I understand the rationale behind what the General Assembly was trying to do. But at the same time, if their action was centered around trying to have differential in pay, then I think before any consideration is made toward a differential in pay, all teachers should be paid. And for the last five years, they haven't been. So before we get into, and I do have some opinion about differential of pay, that is totally in, in, uh, separate from the content of what they tried to accomplish this year. But there is no need for us to even consider any of that until all teachers are compensated fairly and adequately. So I'm in support of this resolution.
And I'll say that I'm in support of it, but I'm also, I also think about the teachers and that stay out there an hour, hour and a half after school and work. And then there, there are those teachers who leave as soon as the bell rings every day. I just think it's important that eventually, um, educators, a group of educators in some way are appointed to be able to set up some kind of merit pay system to where those teachers, for example, that are in these low-performing schools that have high test scores year after year, they're rewarded for it. I just, that's just my feelings. Uh, and I just think that there are some teachers that are out there, and I've been a principal for years, and, and I can pick out the teachers right now that I remember who would stay after school every day, uh, those who would take a stack of work home every Friday and work on, and then those that didn't take anything home, day in and day out. And I just think those teachers, eventually, there should be some system worked out where educators are involved, and the prime ones who are working on that, uh, resolution or whatever, uh, will be able to do that. But at this time, I support this. But I wanted to put that out there also. And I do agree that all teachers need a pay increase, all educators need a pay increase, all of them. Because they have worked for it, and they deserve it. So we've got, any more discussion?
Um, I totally agree with Benji and Worth, and I think, but I think that one of the things that makes this whole thing so disturbing, based on what you just said, Worth, is that there's this completely arbitrary and capricious 25%.
Percent.
That has nothing to do with the reality of the talents of our teachers.
Exactly.
And to, it's just arbitrary and capricious and completely unacceptable.
We, it could be much more than 25%.
Exactly.
Much more. So, uh, any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. And a vote, uh, yes, is we're voting for this resolution. Okay, we're go to the resolution before the Pitt County Board of Education regarding, uh, private school vouchers. And to save time, I will read this. Resolution before the Pitt County Board of Education regarding private school vouchers, because someone will want to read it. Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly passed Senate Bill 402 hereafter, the, the budget bill in July 2013. And whereas the budget bill includes a provision appropriating $10 million to provide private school vouchers. Whereas the fiscal note prepared for an earlier version of the voucher legislation indicates the General Assembly intent to increase annual appropriations for the program to $50 million per year. Whereas the voucher program created in the budget bill does not require participating private schools to provide students with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education as required by the North Carolina Constitution. Whereas the voucher program created in the bill, a budget bill, does not require participating private schools to engage in non-discriminatory admission practices. Whereas the voucher program requires the State Board of Education to reduce funding to each school board of education in an amount equal to the local board's per pupil allocation for average daily membership, multiplied by the number of students who have received the vouchers and were enrolled in the, uh, local board's school during the prior semester. That means the money follows the child. Whereas reducing funding to public schools to fund a private, uh, school voucher program, particularly in the wake of substantial cuts to public education funding during the previous five years, will significantly impair a local board's ability to ensure that students have the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education as required by the North Carolina Constitution. And whereas the voucher program created in the budget bill uses public funds for a non-public purpose in violation of the North Carolina Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Education hereby agrees to join as a plaintiff, the pending litigation caption, Reverend Robert Richardson III, Michael Delors Galloway, Stephen W. Seismont, the North Carolina School Boards Association versus the State of North Carolina, the North Carolina State Board of Education, and the North Carolina State Education Assistance Authority, and authorizes the attorneys engaged by the North Carolina School Board Association and other plaintiffs to, to represent the Board of Education in the litig, litigation with the litigation cost to be borne by the North Carolina School Board Association's Legal Assistance Fund. Sean.
Thank you for saving the time by reading that, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I, I move we adopt the resolution before the Pitt County Board of Education regarding private school vouchers. I would also like to express publicly my, my disappointment for the second meeting in a row on all these external factors. We're, we're sitting here as the Pitt County Board of Education with our hands tied in a lot of ways. And, and I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm very proud to be part of a school system that does not engage in non-discriminatory admission practices. When you say we're educators, that means for every child. We don't have a choice who walks through our door, and we're proud of our community. We're proud of who walks through our door. We don't turn them away. And I'd be very proud to, uh, be on the plaintiff's side in a courtroom for a change, rather than any random individual, uh, wanting to take a pot shot at education. I would rather us take the reins and join the plaintiffs and say, we are proud to be part of public education in Pitt County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any other questions?
One of the things that I'd like to ask Michael about, I believe I've heard this to be true, the per pupil allotment that's reduced is greater than the amount of funds that are given back to the parent in the voucher. In other words, it's not dollar.
No calculation, but that would not surprise me if that would be the case.
What, what I had originally read, and I didn't know if you had something specific, but I think what the general public needs to understand is, the, the exact per pupil state allotment is far greater in terms of the origin, the intent is not education. The intent is a cost savings measure to the state in terms of educating children. It's not anything about education. That's what people need to understand, that the difference is what the legislature is eyeballing in terms of saving. It has nothing to do with the quality of education that they're concerned about children receiving.
Hold on, Michael.
Right.
I think it's at 4200. The only thing that I would say is that I think competition is good. You know, when I look at competition, uh, it's, it's good if the, uh, school systems are doing their job, then we're not going to have students to leave our school system and go to public school.
Well, whether you're talking about your system or charter schools, uh, Pitt County Schools to a large degree has, uh, been immune from the impact of that, even though we do have approximately 200 students that attend charter schools outside Pitt County.
Right.
That has an overwhelming impact to our, our state and, and local allotments. We send, uh, we, we're sending $300,000 for the local money to, for those 200 students, as well as probably over a million dollars of state money out of Pitt County as a result of that. And when you look in light of, we've had three to four, I believe, four applications that have been filed for, for charter schools in Pitt County. With at least one of those with a, a high degree of probability will be approved. That could, uh, that could pull anywhere between 500 and 750 students out of Pitt County Schools in, uh, in the next two to three years. You're talking about a significant financial impact on us as a school system, but, uh, first and foremost, it does create that kind of competition. Looks at what are we, what could we be doing differently, or in addition to what we're doing now, that will help maintain and attract those students to stay here in the Pitt County School System.
And, and that's what I'm looking at, uh, when I read this, uh, resol, resolution here regarding the voucher. I could not support this due to that, because I want to make sure that the school system is doing everything that it can do to hold those students here within the county. And, uh, whether, whether it be any changes that we make within our instructional, uh, programs or what. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things that you're speaking to is what my concern is with this. I hear what you're saying, but my concern is until the playing field is leveled, and, and charter schools or what have you play by the same rules as public schools have to play by. People complain all the time, educators and members of the public alike, all the red tape, all of the requirements, all of the hoops that public schools have to jump through. The things that people like about some of the charter schools, the very few, and if you look at the recent data, uh, charter schools are not performing in the state. If you look at the data, there's some of the things that people like about charter schools. If they would free the hands of public schools to do those same things, people would be just as pleased with their public schools. And so to me, until you level the playing field in terms of the rules and the requirements, we take every student that comes to our doorstep.
That's right.
Every student that comes to Pitt County doors, Pitt County Schools' doorsteps, and we proudly take every student. We're proud of that fact. But charter schools don't have to play by those same rules. And so until they have to take every student that comes to their doors, I don't want to hear that charter schools are the la, latest and greatest thing in education, because it's not.
That's right.
And that's one thing that charter schools have done a well, a good job on to a certain degree of, is the perception. We can work on the perception of Pitt County schools.
Right.
And what we do offer, because you're not going to find anything that's offered at one of those charter schools that is not offered here in Pitt County, and offered at a much higher, higher level than what you find there.
And still, therefore, I'm going back to the private school vouchers. I would support that. You have a question?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I totally, again, understand exactly, I think, what the intent here is. At the same time, one thing that Mark said, um, I agree with completely, and that is, I believe that any competition that's out there.
Field.
Is only going to make public education look better.
Right.
If the playing fields the same. If the playing fields the same, Pitt County Schools will win every time.
That's right.
Correct.
Therefore, um, I don't know if this resolution goes far enough, or if the, therefore be it resolved, is exactly the way and manner in which I would like to see it. Because I'm going to tell you why, I'm going to tell you what, when I read it, what it looked like to me. It looked like to me that reading this resolution, we're scared that the private schools and the charter schools and all those other kinds of schools are going to be better than we are. And that's not true if the playing feels the same.
Correct.
At the same time, we've just gone through, um, and continuing to go through.
Litigation.
Litigation. And, um, I know that our publics are about up to here with litigation and what we've done. So even though, uh, our role in this is very minor, it still creates some litigation, at least support from our part. Therefore, I would offer an amendment, and it can be put at either place, either include the litigation of the therefore, or either put it, I, I'll put it at the end, therefore, we can leave it in there. It doesn't change it much. And it would say, by adding, and encourages the North Carolina General Assembly to provide that any ins, institutions receiving public monies from vouchers must engage in the same non-discriminatory, uh, admission practices as public schools.
You're making a motion on that amendment?
I'm making, I'm making amendment to this resolution.
Well, I had made a motion, we accept the amendment, this resolution, so. You needed, don't, you need to.
He need, he just needs.
A motion and a second, and I'm adding.
He needs a, a second.
I need a second.
I'm going to second that. That's what I was getting at.
Yes, that's what.
Can I ask a question to the attorney?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Stagman, it's my opinion and understanding that it doesn't cost us anything to enjoin a suit through the North Carolina School Board. to enjoin a suit through the North Carolina School Board's trust. Is that the case?
According to the resolution, the School Board Association is going to be paying their legal assistance fund.
Right.
There's no financial.
Right.
May we follow up with that?
How about, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. When you say the legal fund, where does the monies from the legal fund come from?
Well, the School Board Association is funded by dues of its members, so that fund is part of the school. It's not going to be an additional cost for this.
But it's money.
See, that's, that's the, that's the small little caveat of an issue I have with the way it's written right now. And that is because we do pay dues, therefore we will be, we do add to with public monies the cost of more litigation.
He has not got a second. He's got a, he's got a, hold it. He's got a motion on the floor and he needs a second.
I did second it.
You did second it. Okay, and continue with discussion. Jill?
No, I wanted to discuss the original motion, not the amendment.
Any more discussion? Robert?
The only discussion I got is for him to verbalize that addendum again, if you will.
Okay. At the end, I'm going, I move to amend Sean's motion by adding the words "and encourages the North Carolina General Assembly to provide that any institutions receiving public monies from vouchers must engage in the same non-discriminatory admission practices as public schools."
Jennifer.
I have a clarifying question for the attorney. Whether or without this resolution, this lawsuit will continue.
The lawsuit has been filed.
And it will go on with or without us?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And with our money, whether we do this or not.
Whether we do this or not in writing, it will continue.
The School Board Association is already.
They're already in. Okay, thank you.
Christine?
I think the, I don't disagree with, with what Mr. Forrest has said, but the discriminatory practices is already mentioned.
Yes, it is.
And, and then to add a condition, I think nullifies the fact that we would support this resolution and this suit as it is. It's almost as if we want to do our own. And I think the fact that the non-discriminatory addition practices is one of the things we'd like to see addressed. I would not support the amendment, because I think it's addressed in here in a different manner.
Jill.
Well, and I think also, there's an implication that that alone evens the playing field, and it does not. It is one aspect of the playing field that you, that you address if you add it, but it doesn't address any of the accountability that we operate under, that we all are committed to and have been talking about for years, that we hold our teachers accountable. It, it, it doesn't let, it doesn't level the playing field.
Mr. Chair, I would agree to add those items into the amendment as a friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
I didn't make, I didn't make a motion.
I know, I know, but he was going to add that too.
I would just say, if, that, to me, this is sort of like, once you start making a list of the things that make it an even playing field, you could go on all night. And I think we're better off leaving the resolution as it is.
Okay, he didn't get a second. Okay, it fails. All right, we go back to the original. Sean's second, okay. Robert?
My only question is, and I guess it's already been explained, and that is, with the additional verbiage, does it change anything at all?
No.
No.
Or does it add merit to what we would really like to see?
Makes it stronger.
Even though I understand from Jill is, and I can understand, once you start to add items, you know, you would run out of space. And I guess that's where my dilemma is at this point, so.
Go ahead, Jill.
To me, Robert, just that one thing, if you put it on there, it implies that, that, that fixes it, and it doesn't, because it's just one little piece of what's wrong. So I don't want to imply that that's all we're asking is for them to require that.
We've got to vote on the amendment. So where are we? We have to vote on the amendment.
We got to vote on the amendment. And a yes though would be that you are agreeing with Mr. Forrest's amendment.
Are we ready? Lose fails.
It fails. Okay, motion fails. Now we'll go back to.
The original.
The original.
Sean, would you restate?
Sure, that I, that I moved, we adopt the resolution before the Pitt County Board of Education regarding private school vouchers.
Second.
Yeah, I'm still thinking.
Your session coming?
I don't like it.
Yeah.
But I did it.
Okay.
Glad you did, Benny.
I was also going to ask, who is Thomas H. Forbes Jr.? But I left that on.
Please.
We don't care.
Just real quick, I did get a chance to go see the play at Hope, and the teacher and the kids did a fabulous job. Plus remind everyone we have a two-hour delay tomorrow. I was, I was told by my daughter that when they announced that at school, I was, I was the hero of the county for the day. So until I found out that Mark's place over there went three-hour delay, then I was back with nobody.
Okay, when my granddaughter got in the truck this afternoon, she was so happy with that two-hour delay. She was.
All right, good for me.
So that was great. I would say that whenever we're putting out delays or what so forth, that we can put them out as early as possible so that people can make plans for babysitting and so forth. And I appreciate the ones who came tonight and did their presentations. They were great. I appreciate what the central office is doing and the hard work that they have done, and the calendar committee especially. I know that it can be very tough and can, you can almost pull your hair out with that calendar. But I appreciate what you're doing with that. Sean?
I'd like to thank all the staff at Pitt County Schools who made Christmas extra special for a lot of our families, put a lot of extra time, a lot of extra effort, and did so anonymously and silently and with very little thanks. I would like to thank them publicly. That's, that's a huge service of the community. Wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I'm excited for 2014. Very proud to send both of my daughters to Pitt County Schools this morning, knowing that they're in good hands with a good faculty in a safe environment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes, just two things real quickly. Man, we, we vibrate a lot in here tonight, don't we? But first of all, I want to thank Dr. Linker. He's going to be the speaker, the featured speaker at the Pitt County FFA Alumni Meeting held next Tuesday night at the Pitt Palace.
Short.
Yeah, 10 to 15 minutes. And we're looking forward to that. There'll be about 125 people in attendance that night, so. Looking forward to you having there, and invite all the school board members to that meeting. Also, I, I just want to reiterate a couple of other things real quickly. Number one, even though we have a two-hour delay tomorrow, when school does go into session, I want to wish everyone a very, very safe travels to school and back tomorrow, because it is going to be brutally cold, I understand, so be prepared for that. And then finally, I did have a hard time with that last resolution from this standpoint. We don't ever need to run away and back down from competition, because we do what we do, we do excellently. And if, if the General Assembly chooses to say that this is a way or manner in which we use another approach, then by God, let them throw it out there and let's show them that they made the wrong approach. And if the playing feels the same, that's the key, the playing feels the same. And so I just wanted to explain that a little bit more and exactly how I feel on that.
Mr. Robert?
A happy and blessed New Year to the Pitt County staff, school staff, students, teachers and all. And I heard the term highly engaged. I don't know who, but I'm going to come a little different in that students out there, let us get highly engaged. Your performance, what you do, does reflect on somehow what we do across this board. So I got some key items here. Try to get to school on time every day and attend all your classes. Rudeness and bad behavior is not cool. Cooperate with your parents and with your teachers. Facebook, dance hall and all those things can't help you like knowledge, skills and discipline can. Keep and increase your focus at school and don't waste time. I'm talking to students now, but there are parents and guardians out there. You ought to get with them. I go to the mall a lot of times on Saturday and I see a lot of activity, and I sometimes wonder why aren't they reading a book or doing whatever. Hard work, yes, and we expect you to meet that challenge. Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
And dance hall, something dates you.
Dance hall? The dance hall. What was the dance hall?
Mark and I are going to share this together, because we both have it somewhere. And I don't want to take away his thunder, but there was in the Sunday edition of the News and Observer, it, there was an article by Jim Hunt, former governor, and it's finding the will to raise North Carolina teacher pay, and there are some bullet points here, and I'm just going to toss it over to Mark, because he can carry that through, if he would do that.
Mark?
Sure. Before I go into that, I just wanted to say, I saw something in the district that I do some work in that indicated about school bus stops in terms of several YouTube videos that I've seen, and it's from cameras that are on stop arms. I don't know if anybody's seen that or anybody in the public. I would encourage you to watch that. It's very eye-opening in terms of students that are kind of mindlessly walking off of school buses and assuming that cars stop. North Carolina just recently conducted some stop arm counts as they do each school year, and it's amazing the number of people that either don't stop, speed up, or pass a school bus as they're stopped letting kids off the bus. And I know of several tragic accidents that have happened where kids have, had died at school bus stops. So please pay careful attention when you're at those school bus stops, especially tomorrow morning when there'll be a delay, unusual times for kids to be moving. As Ms. Owens was saying, Governor Jim Hunt did write a very well-worded letter in the News and Observer. Couple of points that were very salient, I think, in his article. It says, the governor has a new, former governor has a new resolution for our state. The next four years, let's pay our public school teachers or bring their pay to the national average. Not talk about it or vaguely promise it or form some commission to study it, but do it. Our hard-working teachers deserve it. Today their pay ranks 46 among the 50 states. They could make, make as much as $10,000, and we've talked about that. But what the governor says is the governor and the legislature must appropriate the substantial money required each year to reach the goal. These funding commitments must be very large, so the governor must recommend money each year and the legislature must appropriate it. But the interesting thing is, this is not something new for North Carolina. For those that have been in education in North Carolina, particularly during the Hunt years, it may sound daunting, it is, but North Carolina did it before, and we can do it again. 1996, Governor Hunt says, "I ran for a fourth term as governor on a platform of raising teacher pay to the national average. During the campaign, I talked with people all over the state about raising pay and improving teaching, teaching conditions." And what the governor says is, "I ran for this and people elected me." He engaged the business community, and the top 15 corporate entities in North Carolina said, "We support you on this." They stood out. Goodnight has written an editorial about the same thing, saying basically that he appreciates what the governor said. So I know we're time-bound, but please take time to look at that article. It's very important.
It is.
Christine?
I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome Carol to our fold. I'm sure that she will lead us very competently. And I'd, I'd like to say goodbye to a friend. Katie Ayers is leaving us. She's going back to school full-time to study social work. And while we may not always like what you write, I think you represented us fairly well. And she had an editor that she had to answer to, and if he wanted the dagger to go a little deeper, it was her byline, and she served us well, and I thank you, dear. Send us someone equally nice. Thank you.
Jill?
I meant Jennifer. I'm sorry.
It says J's. No comment.
A motion to. Second? Hold on a second, please, right? You got to vote.